I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council Study Session held on Tuesday, July 11th, 2023, commencing at 7:00 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Carson Stewart-Fields, Council Vice President Kritzer is online, myself, Council President Forsyth, and I am certain that Councilmember Anderson will be in soon. The first item on the agenda is the D-365 Financial System Implementation. Kelly Cochran, Finance Director. Oh, is there no interim in that anymore? It's not listed on my script here. Not yet. Okay. Well, that, yes. Kelly Cochran will introduce this item for us.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I am very excited to be here to share with you an update on the project that we've been working on for quite a bit. I do have some supporting people with me tonight, so we have Mike Marchand, who will walk you through some pieces of the historical background of the project. Also joining me is Jay Freeland and Wanda Norman. Jay is the Senior Business Systems Analyst in the Finance Department, and Wanda is our Project Manager. Her home department is the TIS Department. So we're here with you tonight to share an update on the D-365 project. As I said, Mike will walk us through some of the historical background. Jay and I will share with you an update on the goals and the outcomes that we achieved during the project. Wanda will provide you with an overview of how we implemented the project, basically rolled it out, both preparing the system as well as our customers, and then we'll talk about some next steps. So first slide is just to really demonstrate to you that everyone in the city is basically responsible for this system. All departments use it, most staff use it in one way or another. So this has been a very broad project with a lot of folks involved. So I'll hand it over to Mike.
All right. Thanks, Kelly, and good evening, Councilmembers. Mike Marchand, Chief Information Officer. So this has been, as Kelly mentioned, this has been a long project. It started before I got here. I think we were, I was doing an accounting earlier. I think there's been two TIS Directors, three Finance Directors, and four Project Managers. So it's gone through quite a few hands, and the fact that we're here today talking to you about it and skipping ahead there that we're on, we are actually live running this system is a massive accomplishment. Gartner and a number of other people who know things state that there's about 75%, 70 to 75% of these projects typically end in failure. So the fact that we're here today talking to you with the system up and live and running is impressive, to say the least. So just to cover a few of the sort of noteworthy days and milestones of this project, you know, at some point in 2018 or 2019, I wasn't able to identify the specific day, a portfolio of four business project, technology projects were identified as being critical to the strategic and operational goals of the city. These four projects included the replacement of our HR system, an upgrade, an overhaul of our permitting and land management system, implementation of an enterprise content management system, and the topic of our conversation today, replacement of our core finance system. In 2020, the city signed a system implementation contract with a Microsoft Gold Partner HSO, and implementation work began in 20, in late 2020. Shortly after executing the contract, a decision was made to create a new reporting database which would improve our ability to report on financial data, aggregating data from both our old system and the new system, rather than attempting to import all that legacy data into the new system. A change order was signed, and that work was added into the project. When I joined the city in October 2021, we discovered that the project was in a state of serious risk. There was dissatisfaction, and I guess just a, that's the date, in there, we've got to get them, a date listed in red and green that sort of focuses in on this next part. So there was dissatisfaction within finance and TIS in multiple areas. System was not being configured as envisioned by the city. Project deliverables needed constant rework. Project plan had missed multiple milestones, and there was an overall lack of clarity about what had been completed and what still needed to be done. In November 2021, we elected to pause the project and instructed our partner HSO to perform a complete assessment of the project's status, focusing not only on where we were and where we needed to go, but also focusing on whether our, the city's requirements had been fully understood and incorporated into the project plan. After conducting interviews with everybody, all the stakeholders associated with the project, HSO and our Project Management Office collaborated to create a new project plan, and work resumed in December 2021. On the list of dates, we noted March 1st, 2022 is an important date, not important in a good way, but important because that was one, the day that we unfortunately lost our key systems analyst in TIS who was assigned to this project. That resulted in significant loss of knowledge and skills on the project team and added some delay to the project timeline. Upon that person's departure, we responded quickly by contracting with a staffing agency to supplement the project team with a D-365 specialist working remotely from another state. Fast forward to May 31st of this year, there was a whole lot of things that happened in between then and now, but they were all very positive and brought us to this point. But on May 31st, the project team had completed an intensive testing of D-365 and was able to validate that the system has been configured correctly and to Redmond specifications. Our user training began in June, and we commenced our go-live cutover on June 23rd. Cutover required us to stop using the legacy, the old system, so we could create a static point in time within the system, allowing us to move all of our data from that one to the, to the data warehouse and to the new system without changing anything in the process. Excited to say, as I said earlier, that Monday, July 10th was our first day using D-365 in production, and we've now entered a stabilization period where essentially we work out any issues that, that slept through the cracks or things that, that pop up, ensure everyone's been familiar, familiarized with how the new system works, and begin to look at non-critical tasks that have been delayed to this point. All right. So this next slide sort of shows a breakdown of the two key phases of the project. It was originally envisioned to be in two phases. The initial phase, which we just completed, was implementing our core finance system, and the second phase was comprised of budget planning and new functionality that was intended to improve efficiency and provide an enhanced level of service to the organization. We did change this a little bit, so some of the budget, budget modules configuration was moved to Phase 1 in order to facilitate budgets process, but there was more work that's going to be happening in Phase 2 to sort of reincorporate that into the main system and, and sort of integrate the, the two processes. One of the lessons that we learned during Phase 1 is that we need to reduce the number of moving parts in the project. So Phase 2, while it's shown as one, one holistic phase, it's going to be subdivided into smaller phases, allowing the team to focus on individual modules rather than attempting to configure multiple modules simultaneously. This will, this inevitably means that Phase 2 will take longer than originally envisioned, but it will help us avoid many of the problems encountered during the first phase of the project and get us a more realistic timeline and schedule. Feel free to interrupt me as I'm going here if you have any questions. So this next slide, oh, sorry.
Just quickly on the last slide there, the element you said on reporting for the Phase 1 for Power BI, was that the comment you made regarding the 2020 change to add the amendment for reporting?
That, yeah, that's a huge part of it. So that brings all of our old data into a data warehouse as well as our new data, and then we use Power BI as a tool to create those reports.
Fantastic. Thank you for that clarification.
All right. So this next slide is a rather complicated diagram that shows the architecture of our new finance system and all the integrations between it and the other systems. I'm not going to go through and explain them all because there's, there's a whole ton of things in here, but I wanted to put this here really to kind of illustrate the complexity of the system. So while, one other noteworthy aspect to this architecture is that while our old system was hosted on city-owned servers, D-365 is hosted in the cloud, and in fact, most of the systems that are shown in this diagram are cloud-based. Aside from our legacy Dynamics system, EnterGov, our permitting platform, is the only remaining systems that are hosted on city servers. So it's not to say that everything else the city runs is, is in the cloud, but in this architecture, those are the only two, two that are still on-premise. So a variety of factors contributed to our timeline being extended, but the primary factor is the immense level of complexity required to implement this system. The diagram showed here illustrates exactly how many integrations exist between D-365 and the other systems across the city. Each of those integrations required extensive design, prototyping, testing, rework, and more testing. Furthermore, each integration requires maintenance and updating as the system evolves. Focusing on the technical work of this project, 25 of the 36 staff members within TIS spent a considerable amount of time, some of them almost exclusively working on this project for the past two years. All three of our project managers and our PMO manager participated in it. We have a dedicated full-time D-365 consultant working with us, several resources at HSO, a project team at SAP that implemented our new ProCard procurement card tool, and a dedicated training consultant to educate our staff on how to use the system. So while the amount of technical work involved in executing the project was substantial, this was not simply a technology project and required an intense level of collaboration with our colleagues in finance. Virtually all members of the finance team have also participated in the project. Knowledge of city finance processes is essential to configuring this system, and it would not have been possible to complete this project without the incredible efforts of our finance team. All right. All right. So this, this slide talks a little bit about the technical improvements. So Kelly will focus on the business improvements. I'm going to cover some of the high-level technical improvements. So this being a cloud platform, as a cloud-hosted platform, it brings the city a higher degree of resiliency and security than our previous version. Microsoft enforces a rigorous patching and updating schedule, ensuring that we're always at the latest version and have the most up-to-date security patches. IT folks commonly refer to the type of project we just completed as a forklift replacement, essentially meaning we forclift, take out the old system and replace it with a new one. Cloud platforms generally evolve over time with enhancements and changes occurring more organically, reducing the likelihood that we would need to do another forklift replacement now that we're on this particular platform. User interface of D-365 more closely aligns with other Microsoft products, making it much more user-friendly and creating a better experience for our staff. It contains a more robust reporting engine, and we now have the ability to create custom reports, improving our data analytics posture. And finally, as a scalable platform, what I mean by that is that D-365 at its core is not just a finance system, but it's a full-scale ERP platform. So ERP, enterprise, resource planning essentially means that it can do a whole lot more. It's just whether or not we want to go down those paths and explore some of those options. But it creates a real solid foundation for future growth and opens the door to a lot of opportunities to do some more really incredible things. I think that's it for me.
Thank you. So when we kicked off this project in the Finance Department, you can see on the left our four goals. We really wanted to improve our ability to provide fiscal stewardship, and we wanted improvements in our effectiveness and efficiency, we wanted to make sure that we improved the experience for our customers, not only their ability to use and access the information in the system, but our ability to provide them services that they were needing, and we wanted to reduce risk. And when we were going through the project, really all of the improvements that we made fall into the outcomes that you will see on the right, and I'll be walking you through a couple of those, and then Jay will provide you with the rest. So the first is our updated business processes. So we made 58 significant changes to business processes across the department, and I'm just going to focus on a few, but I think they are, they are the most important few to me. First of all is citywide grant management. As, well, prior to Monday, our grants were managed on spreadsheets throughout the city, and we would go through a tremendous effort on an annual basis to gather that information in order to produce our financial statements. We have now integrated the grants into the financial system. They are in their own kind of module. We will begin entering a grant into the system and make folks aware of it as soon as someone has permission to apply for a grant. So we will be able then to track grants that we received, grants that we didn't receive, and how grants were spent along the way, what projects they were used for, when we build, how we build, all attachments, everything for grants will be in one space. It also will then generate the financial statement that's needed based on the information that is entered in the system. So we've removed the spreadsheets, and we've provided an automated way of creating our financial statement. The other is our project budgeting and reporting. As council will likely recall, the city put a lot of effort in responding to the CIP proviso that was part of the 2122 budget. What the changes do is align the improvements outlined in the CIP proviso with the work that we're doing. So we have designed and configured the project module to provide in an automated way the results that we had shared in that proviso. So what that means is that what you will now see in the system is the full six-year CIP that you approved in the 2324 budget. So all of those projects were entered, and you will now be able to see how they change in time going forward. You'll be able to see changes in timeframes, changes in budget, and changes in scope, because we will also have the business case and the project information sheets that you saw in the budget attached to the project. So it will be a full information repository for our grants. We also automated the reporting. So reporting on our capital projects or business technology projects was all manual before. It was all on spreadsheets, or, you know, we would have to basically create a new spreadsheet every time that there was a request. So we have automated that through the Power BI solution. We have designed reports that will give our project managers what they need to manage their projects and also feed into the way that we monitor the progress of our projects. So there's, there will still be some manual work as we go to answer questions that are maybe out of the ordinary, but we should have pretty standard reporting out of the project module for the CIP. The other is our expanded use of purchase orders. The reason that this is so important is, is kind of twofold. It, well, what we were doing before is we, we had quite a few invoices that were direct paid, meaning they, they missed the workflow approvals. We are now requiring workflow approvals for much more of the requisitions and invoices that are going through the system. It's important for our auditing. It's important for me that managers are aware of, of what is going through their budget. So that was one reason. The other is because there's a tremendous amount of data that we get through our purchase orders, and I'll go over that in the next slide, but it really gets to our ability to provide some spend analytics, which we haven't been able to do before. It also feeds into our DEI program and environmental sustainability. The other is our position budgeting. So position budgeting is a step that we take in the budget process to calculate how much we're going to be spending in the next biennium on salaries and benefits. Prior to this implementation, we did part of this process in our payroll system, extracted that information, imported it in, and finished it from there. And we are now, from beginning to end, can do it in one system and are no longer requiring the use of the payroll system. The last that I want to highlight is our ProCard. We have implemented Concur as our ProCard system management. It sits outside of D-365, but it's a key improvement. It's completely automated how departments or individuals are submitting their ProCard transactions and expense reports. So it's been a big improvement and has been very, it's gone well. People are really enjoying it. No paper, no walking around trying to find people to sign. It's all good. So moving on to the data quality and accessibility outcome, in addition to the information that we're getting from the grants and from the projects, the, the pieces that I'm very excited about are the information that we get from procurement. We now have access to NIGP codes or governmental procurement codes that'll allow us to do some spend analytics that we have not been able to provide before. We also will be able to have information on our vendors, the diversity of them, who owns them, what kind of products do they sell, are they locally owned, is it a small business, and help a lot of our city initiatives that don't have the ability to have that information right now. So very excited to be providing that data to help supplement what we're trying to learn about those other programs. Certainly, collecting more data allows us to improve our reporting capabilities, but there's other things that are allowing us to do that as well. The data warehouse and the ability to create Power BI reports will be a very powerful tool for us. We need the expertise here in the city to start developing the reports on our own, but the consultant that we've been working with has left us, or created about 20 reports for us to start with, and then we have plans to build out additional, additional reports as we go. We have some new system reports that came as part of this upgrade or implementation that weren't available before. As I stated, with the grants, we get a CIFA report, which is one of the financial statements that we had to produce manually before. It's now automated. We also did not have aging reports for collections, so now we can have the ability to have a collection process that is supported by an aging report. We have some customer reports, like how we print checks, how we give those checks registers to you. We refreshed those as part of this project, and we will get a lot of additional reporting capabilities and data from our ProCard system. So as we are utilizing our ProCards in the past, those transactions sat in an access database that was unstable, and now we have the use of some pretty powerful data in our ProCard system. So excited for that. And I will turn it over to Jay.
So I want to highlight a few things on here that I think are important. I'm really pleased to be here. Thank you for taking the time to hear about our project. It's been a while to get here, so even though I'm really tired, I'm very happy to be here. So if I don't look it, it's just because I'm tired. We've had, we've had a great couple of days, though. So this system, I think, is as close to a Toyota Camry that you can get in this kind of software. I'm really happy with the way it's performed. It's been very stable. It's been, it's worked very well for us. We have experience with it because it's been the budget planning module, and I think that we have taken to it very easily. One of the things that the new system offers with the upgrades that we do on a regular basis is that it keeps us in contact with always being current, and that does require that we manage change carefully. So one of the first things that we're doing is implementing careful change management on the business side so that we can work with TIS to make changes to the system. That's a really key improvement, and I think it will offer us a lot of stability over time when we do need to make changes, because that's a reality. Our business changes, and we change the system. As Kelly said, we now have more POs. We're using workflow across the board to capture data about approvals, and that's a really important thing. We had, we've always had approvals for everything we've done, but having them located electronically in one place allows us a level of ability to report that we didn't have before. So it's a really important improvement. To make sure that that workflow is working well, we've also installed escalations so that workflow, if there's an item that is waiting for approval and someone is out of the office unexpectedly or otherwise not available, it will escalate to their manager, and then they can move that forward. We also have more tools for looking at the status of workflows and knowing if there's something stuck. We really want all of our data to move smoothly through the system, so when we're purchasing something or paying for something, those workflows, we want them to continually be, be moving through the system and getting the check out the door to the vendor, getting the purchase order out to the vendor, whatever it is that we're doing. The other thing that we've done is, it's, it's sort of hidden from the user, but we've integrated a lot more information behind the scenes than we had in the old system. So when someone creates a purchase rec that's for something they want to buy, it captures a lot of data that moves through the system as that is processed. Those things were not necessarily connected that much in the, in the old system. In the new system, they're integrated. We do have to carefully manage change because of that, and that's going back to the first issue about change management. It's important that we, we manage the change, but that offers a lot of continuity and I think really ups our game in terms of the stewardship of the data that we're maintaining. So I think that's a really, really important thing. One of the key parts of that is the system will only let you put in accounting information if it's valid, and the old system had some rules to maintain that, but we've installed a much more robust system of rules that won't let bad transactions in. That will help accounting to not have to make corrections at the end of the year when they're doing reporting. That will help us have good data from day one on our transactions, and we should just have much better data all the way through. So I'm really excited about that. I think it's going to take time for data to get through that process, but once it's there, it's really going to be improved. Go to the next one. So the other really great thing about the system is the user experience is so much better for users. It is an upgrade of the system we had. So the grids that you see on the page are similar, so not a lot changes in the world of accounts payable or procurement, right? You ask the same kind, same kind of questions today that you did 10 years ago or 15 years ago, but what's around those grids and the way you interact with them is much more user-friendly. So users are confronted with a new interface, but it has similar options that they're used to, so it's, that's facilitated people getting used to the system relatively quickly. Again, those, the advanced rules and the, and the behind-the-scenes connections help people get through the transactions easier with things that are more relevant to them. So instead of choosing a product code or NIGP code when they buy something, they choose an English description of what they're buying. It's much more intuitive. The code's still there, it's just behind the scenes. So purchasing still do the same reporting, in fact, improved reporting, but they, the person who's entering it doesn't have to memorize abstract five-digit codes for what they're buying. There is better attachment, so when we're adding documents, it's easier to get to them, it's easier to document what's in there, it's much easier to see them because they actually appear on the screen when you click on them. You don't have to open them in a web browser, which is, takes time. There are better notifications when you have workflow, so when information is being sent out to our users, they're getting better information about what they need to do. We've refined the titles. That will be an ongoing process, though, because as business evolves, we'll probably want to evolve those notifications so that people are getting relevant information. And then another really big improvement, and one of the ones that I personally am most excited about, is that we have required training for all users. So if they aren't trained, they don't get access until they are. We have, we hired a trainer to build documentation for us and present the trainings. That really helped us get through the project. Those documents are now resources that we'll continue to use and keep up to date for users as they come, as they onboard into the city. So I think that's a really important aspect of the project. So this, these are the things that we've, we've replaced. Obviously, we replaced Dynamics 2012. Dynamics was out of support, so we have, now have a supported, current system that has regular updates. It's very exciting. It really is. So we have upgraded Tyler Cashier into a new version, so we're on 2021 now. So we're on 2021 now, which is the most current Tyler Cashier that there is. We have replaced the way that we were doing budgeting through Eden, so we won't have to worry about a sort of complex process that we were going through to get our budget data through the Eden, a second Eden system, a subsystem that we were using. We have gotten rid of a VB6 application that was out of support in 2008. We have also gotten rid of an access ProCard database that was prone to failure. We have stopped using the US Bank website, which is a thing in and of itself. The US Bank website is surprisingly not very friendly. And we have all of those new reports replaced in the keep reports. So we've been able to move away from a lot of antiquated versions of things that we were doing.
Hi, thanks for having me here tonight. I'm Wanda Norman. I work for TIS PMO, Technology Project Manager. I started in the end of 2021 through the assessment when they paused the project and worked with all the teams throughout finance and all the different work stream areas, testing all their processes or test scripts before we went into mock-go-live. Mock-go-live was like a test go-live. So that started on April 10. And we also had, at the last week of that, we brought in the end-users that were SMEs in their areas to also do user end-testing. And we ran a total of 387 test cases in that process. And then based on why that was going on, another one of our PMs, Maria O'Neil, worked with our trainer in finance to get all the training materials collected to proceed with training with all the end-users and had a survey where we got all their feedback and created a FAQ list, frequently asked questions list for training. So we had that all ramped up. And then our last day in Dynamics was 6:23, and our first day in D365 was yesterday. So the training, as Jay referred to, the training resources are out on SharePoint. They can be reused ongoing. There's recorded videos out there and guides for all the end-users to use going forward. And then the communications to lead up to the go-live with the end-users was through the Redmond Stories, through the Citywide email system, and also external mailers to our vendors. The budget for Phase 1, we did come in under budget at $3.8 million. I won't read off the phone number there. So there's put in, you know, one-time implementation costs and then ongoing costs for licensing and maintenance. So for the total to date for ongoing licensing and maintenance is $594,978. The budgeted amount, I'm sorry, I'm going to stand here, is with $6.289 million. And we have a remaining $1.8 million left to complete Phase 2. So, thank you.
All right, so one of the ways that council is directly impacted by the project is if you want to or need to submit any expense reports. As we've stated, we have training available that we can share with you or we can meet with you one-on-one or however works best for you if you need to do that. So please contact me if you need to have access to Concur. You have access right now, but if you need to utilize the system to submit your expenses, let us know and we'll get to you as soon as we need to. The one thing I want to make sure that we do tonight is thank all of these people that have helped us from beginning to end. So not only did Wanda do a great job of guiding the finance department, our consultant, and our TIS department, Jay really helped us make sure that we were staying on task and focused on really making sure that we are implementing improvements that were sustainable. The finance department, nearly every person has been a part of this project. And as you can see, quite a few from the TIS department have been involved as well. At the very end, quite a few of them volunteered to help us get data into the system. I don't know that we would have made our go-live cutoff without their help. And we had assistance and support from many departments helping us test, providing us with feedback to the materials we were producing. And it has just been wonderful. So grateful. So I just want to thank these folks for being open to change, for problem-solving, for collaborating, for staying so committed, and clearly perseverance because it's been a long road. So very important to me that they know how grateful I am for what they've done because we are live and we're still live. So we do have some next steps. We have what we're calling right now our stabilization phase. We'll stabilize. We'll verify that the processes we put in place are working. They make sense. Do we need to do any adjustments? We'll start collecting data, creating KPIs, and using them to manage the processes within the system. We have data that we need to collect. All of the information that we'll be able to report out on, on our vendors, we need to get it. So we have folks working right now to identify that information for our vendors. We have performance data. We have grant data that we're still working to collect. We also want to make this data open. So at some point, we'll have kind of a dashboard or an open kind of module for folks to be able to go in externally, internally, and get what you need from it. We have reports that we want to develop. We have Power BI reports. We have reports for council that we want to start designing. We have the spend analytics, as I spoke about, and a need to, you know, learn Power BI and start developing those reports in-house. And then we have Phase 2 as well. But as Mike said, we'll be taking that module by module. And the work that we have already done just aligns very well and should make those modules less of a lift. And that is it. So thank you, but certainly glad to take any questions.
Thank you, and congratulations to all of you and to everyone on that list. I know this was a huge lift and a long time coming. And we all very much appreciate all the work that's gone in. They probably will countless hours and loss of sleep, I'm sure. So yes, very exciting moment, and thank you all very much. We'll open it up to council members for questions. Anybody have any questions? You two can duke it out. Councilmember Anderson.
I have more than one question, but I wanted to say thank you. Also, I heard summer is a great time for a vacation, so this was planned, perfectly timed. So hopefully, everybody gets some time off for a job well done. I just did a couple clarifying questions on the slides. There was a couple of terms that were used that I'd just like them clarified. One is a shadow system, and the other was a forklift replacement project. Could you explain what those two things are?
Sure. So forklift replacement, it's essentially, it's kind of a IT slang-type description, but it essentially means we're fully removing, rather than upgrading a system in place, we're going to take it out completely and replace it with an entirely new system. So with this project, essentially, while DAX, our legacy financial system, was up and running, we built this one in parallel, configured it, tested it, picked a date with a two-week window there where we did the final sync up and then switched it over. And then shadow system, when was that? I don't know the context of that one.
Ms. Cochran's slide, so.
So when I talk about shadow systems, it's really systems that we are using to document data that we would really rather have be in our financial system. So for example, we had an old application that helped us track public defender information, and that is now in the system. We had some Excel models that were built to collect some of the data, and now that is integrated into the system. So getting rid of kind of shadow systems, things that support the data but aren't integrated.
Thank you very much. I've got two more questions. Can I please ask them? Okay, cool. So thank you. So the other question, I think this one's for Ms. Cochran as well. When you were talking about the budget tool, one of the things I remember was working with Ms. Files to have her show me how the economic forecast was done on an Excel spreadsheet. This was probably 2018 or something like that. Did we get, is this technology able to also forecast for the budget?
No, it is not. So our forecasts will still be done in the models that we have. We have a model for the capital program, some models for the utilities, as well as a model for the general fund.
Awesome, thank you. And then the other question, I think this one is for Mr. Marshand. This is, you were talking about hosted data and how we have cloud data now. Is there a way for us to assure that that's hosted in the US as opposed to on cloud servers outside the States?
Yeah, absolutely. So in all of our contracts that we sign with any cloud vendors, that's one of the stipulations that we have in there. And with Microsoft, specifically with Microsoft, we have the ability to select where the data centers are physically located. So absolutely.
Great, thank you very much.
Councilmember Carson.
Well, thank you. I just had a, just kind of a funny question to ask. How many nights did you wake up and think about test cases that you? Because as a software tester myself, you think of things in the weirdest of times, but it's one of those things that it's kind of, you're living the project. And so thank you for gutting it out. I know that, I mean, I've been on some death marches for products releasing, and this one sounds a little bit longer than any of the ones that I ever participated in. So hats off to you and thanks for persevering because I remember talking about this back in probably 2016 about replacing them, and now it's finally done. So, because we had the Big Four, we called them, right? So anyway, so thanks and kudos.
Council Vice President Kretser.
Thank you, and I will join in with others on, first starting by saying congratulations to all of you, especially those who've just dedicated years to this. It's amazing. And, you know, it's obviously not wonderful that it ended up taking so long, but it seems like, I really appreciated in the presentation tonight how you shared so much about the learnings that we had throughout and how we can apply that to future projects, as well as obviously the many improvements to our system now that it's actually up and running and the ones that are to come in the next phase as well. So one question that I had, just regarding the vendors that we worked with on this, did we end up getting any free or additional work from HSO America to account for their role in any of the complications or delays on the project?
I wouldn't say necessarily that we were comped or given any free additional time, but they were very, very flexible in working with us. I think, you know, when looking at the project holistically, there's a number of factors that contributed to the timeline being extended. I think it wouldn't be fair to say that HSO were to bear the brunt of that blame. I think there's probably a shared responsibility in a number of different areas. The timeline is interesting, so it seems like a really long time. But I've talked to other jurisdictions and other organizations implementing similar systems. In fact, I just got back from vacation and I spoke to an IT director at another city, and they are just finishing their finance system deployment. And it also took them exactly five years to deploy it. So it's, I think, you know, the initial contract and the initial scope of work didn't take a lot of things into consideration. And I think it may have been a situation where eyes were bigger than our stomachs type of thing and, you know, maybe a little too optimistic on how quickly it could be done, considering the number of changes we were doing. If it was simply going from one platform to the other as-is, then, and I think that was part of the initial intent of that scope of work. It may have been closer to that timeline. But there were a lot of changes that happened along the way, business process changes, workflow changes. You know, the ProCard tool, that's one perfect example. I think initially, it was envisioned that the D365 native tools would be used. But then as the project proceeded, discovered that, you know, there was a lot of things we wanted to do or needed to do that it wasn't capable of doing. So that led to the investigating and looking for alternate solutions and bringing the tool that we ended up with into play. So HSO was very accommodating, and they worked with us, you know, to make sure that we got to this point, even though it was well beyond the timeline that they had committed to.
Great, thank you very much. And it just seems like even that's an additional real learning there is that sometimes optimism is good. But in other cases, maybe as we approach any future projects, is that balance between optimism and realism on the likelihood of how long projects will take? I think that makes a lot of sense. And just other quick question, I was interested to hear about how the budget work is going to be split up over the two different pieces of the project. So will there be enough functionality to be able to do the work on the next budget?
Yes, so we use the tool for the 2324 budget process. At that point, it was a standalone module. So what has changed now is it is now integrated with the rest of the financial system. That brings us the opportunity to replace budget worksheets that we created in Excel because we'll be able to utilize the system. It also allows us to marry up the budget that we are developing with data from the existing budget, which, you know, we hadn't been able to do before. We had the existing budget sitting in DAX and the new budget sitting in this D365 module. So it will not impact the next budget process. It just enhances it.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Fields.
That's on. Okay, one question and two comments. Is there enough money in the budget to do Phase 2 in the way that you want to do it?
I believe so.
Okay. So I, because similar to Councilmember Carson, a lot of my career was in implementing software projects, you know, like 150 years. And I'm going to be a little bit preachy and pontificate because I remember way back when I asked on this project some years ago, do we have a really clear benefits realization approach? And the answer was, oh, yeah, but we didn't. And the reason I bring that up is because, comment one is, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the benefits nested egg. IT technology gets you so many benefits. Business process improvement gets you so many business, or so many benefits. And then the real benefits are as people get to know the system and become creative. And two, whoever said it, you, sorry, about change management and managing those changes. And I'm really glad that your eyes are wide open on what it's going to take to get that done because I think that's critical to cost savings that you're looking for. Data integration is not a benefit to me. It's a thing. And then what is the benefit of data integration? Efficiency, better flow of information, better communication. So my other comment is also similar to the council members. I really appreciate what you've done. This is the first time that I feel we've seen, one of my favorite project management books is called The Messy Middle. And at the beginning of a project, everyone's excited. What did you say? Your eyes are bigger than your stomach? You should get an award for using that analogy on an IT project, by the way. And then at the end of the project, when we're happy. But in the middle, the messy middle, that's where the humbling and the humility comes. And I see that in what you're doing, the lessons learned. So I feel like what we're going to do in the next few years is really a turning point for the City of Redmond when it comes to our business management and enterprise. for the City of Redmond when it comes to our business management and enterprise management system. So, thank you.
Councilmember Carson, did you have a follow-up question?
I did, actually. I had a real quick question about how, if any, the pandemic figured into kind of elongating the project.
Yeah, I didn't touch on that, but absolutely, it played a factor in there. You know, there was a lot of disruption, there was a lot of time, and that would have been before I joined the city, because it was, pandemic was beginning to wind down, at least when I joined. But, you know, there was a lot of time where people were basically taken off the project. So instead of working on this, we were working on just keeping the lights on and transitioning from being here on premise to working remotely and dealing with all the complications involved in there. So, yeah, absolutely. To quantify exactly how much of an impact, it's difficult, but I'd say substantial, yeah, as well.
Great, thank you.
Anything? Congratulations, and I can't wait to see what your teams are able to accomplish now that they have the tools that they needed all along to do their jobs. Thanks.
All right, I will follow up with my questions. First, I just wanted to give a giant kudos to whoever, whatever the team was, that back in November of 2021 decided that the pause needed to happen and the assessment needed to happen, because that seems like, from this process, that was a critical moment. And to be able to take that step and look at everything and say, we need to take a breath, is huge and it speaks volumes to the leadership. So I just wanted to give kudos for that. My only question is, will there be a postmortem process that will happen for lessons learned, applications to other projects throughout the city, throughout departments, how we can learn, take those lessons and carry it throughout other departments and other projects?
Absolutely. So, yeah, that is absolutely on the roadmap, is to do a postmortem, lessons learned, reflect on what went well, what didn't go so well. For Phase Two, we made the decision, we're going to break it into phases rather than one solid phase, but we haven't sat down and actually had a chance to go through and say, what do those look like? Are we going to do them the same way? Are we going to have internal folks do them versus contractors? Are we going to use HSO? Or how we're going to do it, what it's going to look like? And that's going to be a lot based on all that reflection, lessons learned postmortem, so.
Great, I think reflection is good in this. Mayor Bernie. Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you to the teams. Oh, thanks, David. The, this project started, began when I was on council, probably my first year on council. And so, it was wonderful that the city realized that they needed to do this project. And I think it really took the team that you see before you to really get it to completion and all the other people that you see listed on the slide in the presentation. It was an extremely challenging project that could not fail. And so I appreciate the tenacity that the team took on, the ability to see the challenges that each, sometimes each moment brought, and find the solution and get us to this point. And I don't want to jinx anything, because I know we just went live, but I do want to, huge kudos to both these, this interim director and this director sitting here, because they really worked very well together to ensure that this, we achieved the goal of getting this live. So, it was really a monster feat, and I really appreciate all the work everyone did on this. And I just wanted to speak to that to all the council as well. And the funding of all of this was also extremely important, so thank you.
Great, thank you all so much, congratulations. All right. And with that, we will move on to our next agenda item. The next item on the agenda is the item for, Items from the Audience Policy and Procedure Review. So, in the memo, you will all will see that there is some suggested language that we can add to our council rules of procedure. I'll go ahead and read that aloud. The section that is thought about, is suggested to be added, is, "Speech that is violent, threatening, or contains racial slurs or other slurs directed at the national origin, citizenship, or mental, physical, or sensory disability of any individual or group shall not be permitted as it disrupts the orderly conduct of the council meeting. Personal attacks on individuals that disrupt, disturb, or impede an orderly conduct of the council meeting are also prohibited." So this language has been vetted through council, or through council, legal council, Mr. Haney. And it is council leadership's suggestion that we add this to our council rules of procedure, so that when we do have moments where these issues occur, we are not impinging upon anyone's First Amendment rights. As it is conducted as a limited forum, this is, would be legally binding and would allow us to rule that person out of order. So, I will open up for discussion based on that information. Any thoughts from council members? Councilmember Carson.
What is the problem we're trying to solve?
To put it bluntly, no longer being called Nazis. We have, we have several instances where community members have said things that have impacted council members in ways that have disrupted our meetings and have disrupted a person's ability to think critically in the moment and to be present, be fully present in the moment. And I believe that this gives us that opportunity to ensure that those council members are able to be present in their full selves.
Well, I guess I would just say that, I mean, we know we're not Nazis, the audience, rest of the audience knows that we're not Nazis. You know, it's, it's, without casting aspersions on speakers, clearly, we have some who, I don't know how to put it, you know, are not, you know, have some issues. So, I don't, I, you know, I saw, I read all the different cities that, that, you know, have clauses in their, similar clauses to what we're talking about tonight. And I, I mean, if that's the worst, I mean, I do, I do think maybe something to do with, you know, with profanity. You know, clearly, we've had people who have said, you know, curse words, that, I don't, I don't know. I just don't know how to do this without, I don't know, I'm going to have to mull the language over that you read, but I don't know, I just don't think it's that big a deal.
And to be fair, I was, I shouldn't have been quite so flip when I, in my response. This is preventing an issue that could become a bigger issue at some point, obviously. The example that I gave was just one instance, but the language as presented is much more broad and would allow us, in any instance where something disruptive comes forward, to actually be able to do something about it. As it currently stands, we can't do anything. So this provides us with that stopgap. And to be honest, a lot of the times, we may not, we may choose to not do anything, but having this within our code of conduct means that we can do something if something becomes egregious. Councilmember Fields.
So who's "we"? I mean, sorry, how would we, and how would this be enforced?
Through the chair.
So the chair would take a point of order from a council member, or the chair would decide exclusively, or?
I think either are possible. There could be a point of order called, or the person chairing the meeting, whether it be mayor or mayor pro tem, could rule the person out of order and cut the mic.
So what would be the scenario if the chair ruled somebody out of order, council or members of the council didn't agree? Then we would have to override, overrule the chair? Just like we do on anything?
We could take a vote to do so, yes. If we're following Robert's rules.
So nothing would change in that? There's no automat, I mean, all of our parliamentary rules are still in place. This would just be sort of facing the public and let them know that certain things would not be accepted.
Correct.
And they run the risk of being escorted from the premises, I guess, because, you know, asked to not say anything. And then if they continue, then they would have to be escorted out, or whatever, right?
That is my understanding, yes.
Yeah, I'm not against this. I understand Councilmember Carson's concern. I don't, I do think, as you pointed out, Council President, this sets us up to resolve maybe something that hasn't happened yet, but could. And especially, you know, the more we experience those kinds of, you know, it's not just the one that you mentioned, there's been a few others that are borderline on talking about certain demographics or, you know, characterizing parts of our community. It gets close to a very uncomfortable thing. We could cross over, easily cross over into something hateful. So, I think updating our rules around this is probably a good thing. I do think that we should be careful on how we enforce it.
Thank you. Council Vice President Kritzer.
I would just add on this, that I think an important piece of this is the specifics that Mr. Haney put in, is that in particular, the focus, you can see in both sentences, is, "As it disrupts the orderly conduct of the meeting," or disturbs or impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. So, it wouldn't stop people who we disagree with saying whatever they want, or even saying things that, like saying negative things about us or others in a lot of ways. It's to the point that it's disrupting the orderly conduct of the meeting. And that is, to a certain extent, a judgment call, but it, but there is a bit of a line there. And I'm sure Mr. Haney could also follow up with the council to give a little bit more detail on how we might interpret this, and hopefully to the mayor as well, should we decide to move forward with this. But as Council President Wirth said, I think it provides for us, you know, for the future too, yeah, as different things may happen, to be able to have that in, and to have a little bit of bounds on what is a limited public forum. We decide to provide public comment. And I think that's a really great thing, because we hear so many great ideas from our public at a typical business meeting. But sometimes, obviously, we get a variety, and if we end up in a situation where we should need to be able to enforce, or be able to deal with a situation, we're described in this paragraph, I think it's good to have the tool. And because, because we are deciding to allow for public comment when it's not actually technically necessary, we designate this as the limited public forum for public comment, and we get to put the bounds on that.
Thank you. Any other thoughts from council members? Councilmember Anderson.
I think Ms. Stewart was first, but this is, nose goes. Just kidding. So I think my position on this item remains about the same. And similarly, to ask a direct question, like Mr. Carson, who is this for? It sounds like it is a little bit like what Mr. Fields suggested, which is to kind of protect the council from language that is disagreeable or uncomfortable, which is essentially what Mr. Haney told me when I asked him the same question about if it's possible to manage that. And that is a big concern for me. I think that this belongs in the operating guidelines for our council meetings, and that would be appropriate to add to that document, but that's not within council's control. However, it is what people read if they bother to read anything prior to a meeting, in terms of how to behave at a council meeting. I'm not clear exactly why that's not enforceable.
So, sorry, I'm, you're suggesting, instead of going in council rules of procedure, this go where?
There's a document that is called, it's a Meeting Operations or Meeting Procedures for residents or people who come to our meetings to, that set the code of conduct for them. So the-
But if it's not in our, it's my understanding, if it's not in our rules of procedure, it can't go in the document that is set for the community, because we will have no way to enforce it.
Who? Who enforces it?
That-
The chair does.
That our council rules won't enforce it, therefore the chair can't enforce it.
If there's no rule, then you can't not enforce it either. You don't need a rule to enforce something, you can just make it be-
But it will then be a first, it's my understanding, it will then be a First Amendment violation if we were to, given that it is a limited forum, if we were to tell someone they were being disruptive, since it's not in our council rules of procedure, then there's nothing we can, we have no standing.
I'll put it in this way, this is a meeting operations procedure or a term of participation that's not necessarily a governance decision. So I would not necessarily expect to see it in a council rules of procedure, I would expect to see it in operating guidelines.
I still-
But I don't know why it's not enforceable by council if it's in operating guidelines.
My take is that if it's from Mr. Haney and from the discussions, that if it is not within the council rules of procedure, that is exactly where it has to live, for it to be any sort of nonviolation of someone's rights, for the limited, the limited engagement of this particular regular business meeting format.
What if the mayor made an executive order?
I'm not sure why we would need to do that if we have the ability to make this decision amongst ourselves.
Because it's not council's meeting.
It is council's meeting.
It is the mayor's, mayor's meeting.
No, technically, sorry, technically, it is the council's meeting, the mayor chairs the meeting, so the council can make the decisions. And everyone can vote.
Okay. I disagree.
Okay. Mayor Bernie.
I concur that it is the council's meeting, the mayor's only the chair of the meeting, so, yes. This, according to our lawyer, if you want to limit in, because as you mentioned, the having, having the Items from the Audience is a limited public forum, and so therefore, the council needs to put the limits on the forum, and this is part of limiting the forum. And then, to Councilmember Anderson's, the public engagement part comes directly from the council rule, the council rules of procedure. We, nothing is in there that isn't already in your council rules of procedure. So, it's just a reiteration of that, and it's just an easier document for the public to search, and that's all that it is on the public page. So, my question on this is, to Councilmember Fields' point, it would be hard for a chair to know when comments would disrupt the orderly contact, conduct of the meeting. And so that's where I do struggle with that, because I don't know what the boundary is there. So, that is a question to all of you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart? Did you still want to weigh in?
If someone had a response directly to that, they could weigh in. No?
Not at the moment.
Well, I'm going to do something that is a little bit annoying, I realize, but for every one person who will email me with their displeasure of the method, I will get several emails over a period of time stating appreciation for. So I, I'm just going to like, go back up on the balcony for a second, to use a high-fits term. I mean, we, a couple of weeks ago, brought up the issue of misinformation, and then hate speech was brought up, and we decided to have this discussion again as a council. We did have this discussion in 2022, so everything that Councilmember Anderson is speaking to today, she has spoken to over a year ago, in terms of her preferences. So, we, I guess, just to bring the story back to tonight, then, we wanted to bring this conversation back, but it looks like what we were offered tonight, and when it was introduced by the council president, was a very specific solution to a particular version of the problem. And I'm just left curious what was on the cutting room floor, because there are other ways to limit the forum, and why this was- because there are other ways to limit the forum and why this was chosen as the preferred method.
So I have not gotten to my other offer. But this in particular, this language in particular was brought forward as the preferred method and the approved method from, from legal counsel to, to combat the, one of the major issues that we were trying to solve for. The other item that I was hoping to bring forward was reducing our public comment time from four minutes to three minutes and understanding where folks felt about that. I know in the past, that has not been a popular idea. So just wanted to float that out there, but I understand that if that may not be something that folks are interested in.
So before we change the topics on then, on that then, another way to limit the forum, which we have been advised of before, is to have folks have part of the, the process only items on the agenda can be spoken to. For the individual in question, that it sounds like the solution has been targeting quite, quite a bit. This works in another meeting that I participate in regionally because individuals who come with another motive have to state what they're speaking to on the agenda. And when they proceed not to speak to that agenda item, but rather continue to use the same hate speech that we've seen here in our own chambers, then, then they're done and they're not recognized by the chair any further. So that is one of the options that we were previously provided in the memo from Mr. Haney as well.
Correct. I do believe that was an option we spoke about the last time we talked about this. And there was zero interest in limiting public comment to items that were only on our agenda. So that was why council leadership did not explore that as an option because we understood from what we heard from the last conversation that council members really did not want to limit what the community could speak to and that there was no interest in, in really like honing in three members of, from one side speaking to an item, limiting to items that are only on the agenda that we heard loud and clear from the last conversation. So we just wanted to make sure that whatever we did bring forward was the most open and lenient and also had the city attorney's buy-in. Does that help provide context?
Yes. Was there anything new on the cutting room floor?
There was not because it was very clear that everyone wanted to leave this as open and free as possible. But open to ideas if there are any. Councilmember Fields.
Couple of clarifications. I have, there's no issue for me about getting my feelings hurt or being uncomfortable. Like, I don't think there's anything that anybody could say that's going to get, hurt my feelings or make me uncomfortable, similar to what Councilmember Carson said. Being called a Nazi by the guy who comes and calls us a Nazi every two weeks doesn't really faze me. However, it could be pretty offensive to someone who actually had family, who understood what Nazis did and what that history speaks to. So when I, when I'm talking about limiting certain things being said, it's not about whether I'm uncomfortable. It's about whether they're escalating hate speech, hate conversation. Somebody coming in here and, you know, blatantly saying this demographic is lazy or this demographic, whatever. I don't think that we should allow those kinds of comments. That's, and, and that hasn't happened in the time, or I don't think it's happened in the time I've been on council. So that's why I was speaking to the future, so that I wanted to clarify that. This is not about council. I don't, or at least from my perspective, it's not about council being, having their feelings hurt. I also want to speak to the misinformation. I am the one that brought that up. And I was not in any way, shape or form saying that those people shouldn't be allowed to say things that are not accurate or say things that are not true. They can say it all they want. But if they're speaking about Redmond City Government and Redmond City Government members, what I was saying is that we, and they're being inaccurate as those former electeds were, then I feel like we should set the record straight because they hold a certain weight in what they say. And I, I don't think it's fair that, that they're allowed to say those things and not have some counterbalance. They can say them all day long, but I feel like somebody should set the record straight. That's not accurate. That's not true. They don't have to do it while they're talking. But I, I know that the mayor has done that on issues important to her in the past. And I feel like council or whoever, a member of council, should be able to do the same thing. That's basically it.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson.
And I, I agree. I mean, I think, and I've been recognized by both the mayors that I've served with to correct something that I thought was inaccurate of a, of someone who came to council to talk about a topic. I wasn't, that's not what I was actually going to talk about. But so I, I think the biggest problem I have with this is, first of all, the wording is, is just not correct. It's not good. Because first of all, I defy you to show me how speech can be violent. Now, it can be threatening violence. So I think if, if we do take this, speech that threatens violence, okay, that's, but that's also a crime. So I'm sorry, if someone comes and threatens us with violence, then, you know, the witnesses that are in the room can, which some, and we always have at least one officer in the room. That, you know, and I've, I'm trying to think, but I don't think anybody's ever done that in, in the time I've been on the council. And I, so even with my revision, I don't see how this would pertain to the person that was cited earlier. How exactly is calling us a name that we are not, it's not racial, it's not, that's other slurs. But, but if you look at the, at the other things, I don't see how it fits any of those categories. So I don't think we're solving anything. I certainly don't think we should, should shorten the amount of time we give people as we see they have a difficult time with four minutes as it is. And I see, I mean, I couldn't believe that you get two minutes at a Seattle City Council. You can't say anything in two minutes. So I, I mean, I want, I want, if we're going to do something like this, it needs to solve a problem for me. And I think this just makes more problems than it solves, so.
Council Vice President Kritzer.
Thanks and thanks for the, the good discussion. So many different comments have happened since I was mayor. So go through a few things. One is I think Councilmember Fields really hit the nail on the head for me a little bit in some of his comments around, you know, why we might want to do this. Because I think the question is whether we want, if we define this limited public forum, do we want that forum to be a platform for hate speech? And if we want to say, we don't want that, that particular public forum to be a place where hate speech can, can, can happen because the public does listen in. And it's, and oftentimes, when there have been situations that have been on the line or, or in this bucket, I see other people in the audience and the way that affects them and think about the listeners at home. So I think that's, that's something for us to consider. Secondly, I think the question about what was on the cutting room floor, I just want to be clear about why this item is on the agenda. I actually suggested that we just have this as part of council talk time because it was brought up at council talk time. And I don't think this is a new item in any way. Council President Forsyth and I didn't do any major additional work on this. This is really just bringing it back because the council seemed like they wanted to discuss it more after last time we did a bunch of work to bring it. And it seemed like the council couldn't quite agree. So if there's not agreement, you know, we can kind of be at the same place again. The only other suggestion that I might have, if we can't agree on actually adding something to our rules of procedure, from what I'm hearing, is if we want to set the tone of what we hope in our meeting is that we could take some version of this and have the mayor read it at the top of the meeting to say, "We ask that speakers do not include," and then include these types of things, which I think the mayor is already including some of this type of language, but we could specify a little more language for the directions that we give to the public. It wouldn't give us standing if people decide to start including some of this, any sort of threatening or other types of language that's as is specified here to be able to stop them from saying it. But if we wanted to be clear that, that that is our wish, then we could, we could do something like that as an in-between if we can't decide on, on this. And I would say, last piece is, I would support, and I think I said this last time, if we wanted to move to three minutes, not because I would want to limit anyone's speech. I would say I've done a ton of testimony now in the legislature and oftentimes they only give you 60 seconds, 90 seconds. Two minutes seems like actually a lot. Three minutes, I think, is great. And part of my thought is actually for the public because people, when they come to speak, sometimes have to wait a really long time to be able to speak. And if we actually reduce by a little bit each of the amounts of time, it actually will allow, it might allow more participation by the public because you can have more people speak or they don't have to wait quite so long. Sometimes people leave just because it's taking so long for it to get to their time. And I think most people are able to cover what they, they need in about three minutes. So we don't want to limit what people have to say. And they can always come back to us the next week if they feel like they didn't get what they had to say. But, but then again, I feel like when we discussed this last time, there wasn't a huge amount of support. But I'll just support Council President Forsyth's idea on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Ms. Kritzer, that's a great idea. I love the disclaimer. I think that's a great idea, especially as an interim option. The one that we've started to read already is very helpful at setting the tone for the meetings. And that is a very effective way of managing a meeting, totally a useful tool in that way. I also wanted to say, I agree with the misinformation comments a little bit, provided that we have all agreed facts on one end of it. If we hear it, we would need to adopt some sort of a procedure to handle that. So that this is where, in a rules of procedure, I'm not totally clear if this belongs in the council rules, if council is the executor of those rules or how that will be managed. So that's a general question. I would also raise the idea of potentially a resolution defining what hate speech means in the city of Redmond such that it could be enforceable in a way that I guess the existing resolutions we have in this regard are not enforceable somehow. I, I know that hate speech is a challenging term to define legally. So putting some of this into a resolution, which is a little stronger than perhaps rules of procedure, which are a little bit more malleable, I think that might be a little bit easier. And then finally, I think I agree, not exactly sure who mentioned this. It might have been Mayor Bernie and it might have been Mr. Carson. But the idea that the, the paragraph itself is rather subjective, so it does matter quite a bit who is interpreting that in the moment and also who has the control and understanding of what the next step is or that procedure that comes out of whatever we define this to be. But I'm definitely in favor of adding it, adding more language on the disclaimer to help folks behave according to a standard that we're setting.
Okay. So if I am hearing correctly, I feel like I'm hearing a bit of a split on the language that is in front of us. I'm hearing two, two definite no's and maybe three yeses and a maybe. Is that, is my math accurate? Councilmember Carson.
Thank you. Well, I, so the, the last sentence of the proposed language, the personal attacks. So if, if we can't be criticized, then I, I think that sentence should just be removed completely. Because, I mean, you don't run for any office thinking you're not going to be criticized by someone. I would actually, if we were going to, I mean, I'm not totally opposed to giving us some enforceability to what is clearly way out of bounds in terms of demeanor and that sort of thing. So, but I would want it to be, so first of all, speech that is threatening violence is illegal. That's, that's what that first sentence should, should say. And, and we will, and the city of Redmond, or it will be prosecuted if, if it's done in this forum or something to that effect. Because that makes it very clear, you, you shall not do, you know, threaten council or the mayor with violence or staff. So that's that. I, the, the personal attacks, I mean, yes, people have, have, you're not, you're supposed to direct things to the presiding officer and to the council generally. People don't understand that. I get it. They will call out either individual council members, the mayor or directors, for example. And, and we've had that happen. I don't think they realize that that's, so, you know, perhaps a, a sentence to that effect that, you know, you, you should not address individuals. You should, you're there to talk to the council and the mayor. And you can do it in a way that, yes, you may have to mention names, but it's, you know, it's more arms-length. I think, I don't think people, I mean, we all get that because we have been in enough meetings. We, we understand how you address, especially our, our fellow council members and the mayor. You, you don't go directly at them. It's, it's, it's a kind of decorum thing. But honestly, I, it, it, it doesn't put me off that, you know, we, we can't control that aspect of it. I think that's part of the job. So anyway, I, until, I think this would have to be reworded completely for me to be supportive of it.
Okay.
But those were the, the kind of the sticking points I had.
If you could send your, a rewrite that you would-
Proposed?
A proposed rewrite to Jason and that can be discussed. I'd be interested in hearing what that would, would look like. Knowing that this is approved by legal, I'm, I'm definitely interested in this. And, and knowing that this is something that will not get us in trouble. So that's why I would definitely want to have whatever new language be, be vetted. And knowing that violent threatening speech still has to rise to a certain level to, which is, does the person have the means to follow through? Does the person, will the, like, are there other things the person is collecting to follow through? So there's a lot that goes behind that. So that's why I think having the legal contextual background and in the way it is written is very important.
I, I think it's, the very first part of it is written inaccurately because you, speech is not violent. There's, I, there's no way you can, I guess you could spit on someone as you're speaking, but that's not what we're talking about.
I, I think there's a very clear, like, legal background for why that is the way that is. But we don't need to parse that out at the moment.
Right. I just think it's, it's not phrased well. Speech that threatens violence, yes. That's, I understand, I understand what you're going for there.
I mean, someone could, someone could give violent, say violent language without it actually being in particularly a threat to any of us. But not to go down that rabbit hole.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, I'm, I'm happy to, to give a version.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor Bernie and then Councilmember Stewart.
I'll try to keep it quick. One thing that was also not brought up this time was that we can limit the amount of time we give to public comment too. But that's just a, so like 30 minutes, I think Bellevue gives, for example.
Right.
I would say if, if you want something to be read at the beginning of a business meeting in order to encourage positive commentary, this is quite long. And that means people may or may not pay attention to that. May perhaps something that encourages commentary that's positive might be a better route to go rather than- listing out all the negative ways that someone can comment. But I'll leave that to all of you.
Councilmember Stewart? Sorry. You do not have to go if you are not ready.
No, that's okay. Um, and thanks for your patience with my persistence in, in the whole story. Um, so that people like me and members of the public can keep up. So I'm in favor of language. I was going to say, I'm in favor of the language. So if this was the language for our rules, I can be very much in favor of this, um, and amending what is said at the top of the meeting to communicate the right intent. Um, I think intent is what's most important here probably. Um, and I, I'm very, um, appreciative of that. And then I think that if we do act on this, we create accountability. So currently feedback from community I get is how could those comments possibly be allowed in our city hall? Um, and if we have better communicated the, the information like this, then that creates a feedback loop. Because if, if speech that- if speech is allowed that maybe shouldn't have been, then that's feedback for the next time. Um, and it creates an accountability loop. And I, I really appreciate that. Speech can be violent. We, we will always have survivors of abuse, um, in our community and, um, involved in our meetings. We will always have descendants of Holocaust survivors participating in our council meetings. Um, and staff are also among those who can be personally attacked and have been in our meetings. So, um, I am, I just want to acknowledge those things. And I'm actually in favor of two minutes. I believe that the purpose of public comment is to raise an issue and share an idea to solve the issue or raise an issue and ask for help, um, or to state a position. And I think that that can be well achieved, um, by folks in about two minutes, especially since our items from the audience sign-in sheet, um, has a check mark, like, do you want follow-up on this? Um, and we, we have the option, we, the council have the option, any of us can go back into that data and reach out to the public to help solve issues. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Vice President Critzer?
Thanks. Um, first, I was just gonna say, if we were to look at this, um, we could, uh, Mr. Haney did note when he provided us this language, that you could just go with the first sentence rather than the two sentences. I believe the personal attacks piece was based on, uh, discussion started long ago, probably almost a year and a half, two years ago, um, around that particular piece. So, um, we could, we could still use the first sentence if we wanted to. Um, I would say in terms of the process going forward, that it would be good tonight to get a sense of whether there's really, um, a majority of council interested in moving forward with any of this because, um, I don't want, uh, Councilmember Carson or anyone else to spin their wheels on, on creating new versions, um, if, uh, if we're not actually going to get to a point, um, where we would be ready to vote on this. Um, and to the point of whether we want to rework with the, the mayor, the, um, what is that at the top of the meeting, regardless of whether this happens. If, if that's something the council wanted to give direction on, I'd be happy to work with Council President Forsyth and the mayor on coming up what's, with what's the best language that is also not too big of a mouthful to say at the top of the meeting. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Given that this is a long paragraph to read, one thing that we could do is put it where the sign-in sheet is in terms of a code of conduct for the meeting. Just if, if it's not there already, I'm not signing into meetings at this point, so I have no idea. But as long as it's in front of folks, um, and we do a shorthand version of it at the start of a meeting, it might help in the interim. Um, I think that's a very meaningful solution to sort of the pressures that we're feeling on multiple ends, uh, and kind of solves the problem. And if, if it escalates further, then I think it might necessitate consideration of limiting our public forum.
Okay.
Also, I don't really care about three or four minutes. So, thanks.
I'm going to do some straw polling here. Um, first question will be adopting the first sentence and removal of the personal attack sentence. Second question will be if you're in favor of, as the language stands. Third favor will, or third question will be if you are in favor of reducing the time to three minutes. So, first question, would you be in favor of adding the language to our council rules of procedure that is just the first long sentence where it identifies all of the different kinds of speech into our council rules of procedure? Thumbs up, thumbs down?
To be clear, options one and two are opposites. It's the whole, the first one is just the first sentence and the second one is the whole thing.
Yes. So in favor of just the first sentence of the proposed language? What was that?
Did everybody see that?
Was that a maybe sideways? What was that, Councilmember Fields? Here, the split vote here. We can move to the next one if that, if that's easier. Are you, those in favor of adopting the language as it stands? Okay. Uh, so we are split vote on that. And those in favor of reducing the time for public comment from four minutes to three minutes? All right, we have four thumbs on that one. So we have an agreement on time reduction. So that is, we're getting somewhere. All right. Um, going back to the language as it is in the memo, um, Council Vice President Critzer and I will take the feedback we have heard tonight. And Mr. Carson, uh, if you can submit to Mr. Brown, we will take your, um, suggestions into consideration as well and figure out when we can bring this item up again for conversation. Councilmember Anderson, did you have something else?
One thing that, uh, just came into my head, I apologize. I know this bothers folks when I have ideas. Um, the rules of procedure could refer to the document that does exist for community guidelines. And we could delegate that document to be the managing authority, um, that the chair uses as the guiding document. So that would get, give the opportunity for the language to go in a place where is the most effective for the user, which is the items from the audience. So the audience themselves need to know these rules. Um, and that would fulfill our legal obligation that we perceive in this context as a limited public forum. I think that's how-
I think we would need to get clarification from Mr. Haney if that would actually work. It's my understanding that, that document that the audience sees is pulled from the council rules of procedure. So if it's not in the council rules of procedure, I feel like we have a chicken and an egg situation happening here. Um, so I will present that, I, that suggestion to Mr. Haney and see where that would land us and if that would land us in an okay situation or if it would put us in some sticky, a sticky situation.
I, I would, um, just encourage, there are times when there is a lot of audience members where you may not want to stick to a three-minute time limit, given the number of people in the audience. You may want to shorten that and-
Yeah.
A meeting-to-meeting situation, not necessarily something we want to codify in our council rules. So that's one of the suggestions I would have would be if you can delegate that authority to the mayor through the chair or mayor pro tem, whatever that looks like, into those guiding documents, which we've done through a number of different ways that we delegate authority. Um, the, the management gets, um, clearly put into a particular role and that helps a lot.
The four minutes, I believe, is already in our council rules of procedure? That's where it comes from?
I wish there was nothing about items from the audience in the rules of procedure.
I see where you're going.
At the same time, and the reason is because that document duplicates itself or it can be much clearer and it's not, we don't manage the, we don't manage the audience. The, the document does, so.
I understand where, where you're going now. Okay. Council Vice President Critzer?
Thanks. Uh, I would say respectfully, I think we've had this discussion before directly with Mr. Haney. And he's also sent us multiple, um, memos on this topic saying that, that the path described, it really has to go through the rules of procedure legally based on case law related to this. So, uh, we can go back to him and get his time again, but I do think, uh, that, um, while, while it's, it's really good thoughts, I just, I, I think we have gone through this a couple times. So my, my question for you, Council President, would be whether you can take a straw poll on whether we actually should, uh, whether people do want to come back on this yet again, um, other than the three minutes, which we seem to have at least a majority interest in moving forward on. Cause I, I just, from my perspective, I don't want to like keep having the same conversation if we're not going to actually, uh, be able to agree or move forward on the action. Um, happy if people, if there is interest in changing what we say at the top of the meeting. Maybe you could straw poll on those two things if possible.
I think that's a, Councilmember Carson?
Um, so if, if we change it to three, I will be opposing this completely, no matter, no matter what the language is.
Separate actions.
I, I understand, but it, but, well, we're going to be doing it together. Now-
We could divide, okay.
Well, I mean, if, if, if we're going to change that, I, I think it's, I, I just think it's wrong to, I, I honestly don't know, I mean, people don't come here because they want, well, I mean, we have, there's always exceptions to the rule, but because they want to pontificate. Um, they, they want to communicate something and I think four minutes says, I, I think it's been a perfect amount of time. When I see two and three minutes from other councils, I'm like, you know, it just, it bothers me that we're not willing to listen to someone for four minutes. I mean, some give fives. I, I get it that, but it, it simply is too short an amount of time to get, you know, a even modestly complex issue across to someone. So it's, it's longer than an elevator speech, but it's, you know, shorter than a Toastmaster speech. So, but, but I think we need to give people enough time to, you know, cause they're nervous that, you know, it's, it's not easy to come and talk to council. So, um, I, I just simply won't support it if we don't, if we change it to three minutes or anything less than four.
Well, are you still-
I've already submitted the, the language-
Okay.
To Jason. So, um, but I, I, I don't know. I just can't support changing that.
Okay. Thank you. Um, is there interest in continuing the conversation around adding restrictions to our limited forum, um, speech? Yes or no? Councilmember Fields?
I'll go back to what I've said a couple of times, and it's actually your point, Council President. I think there, uh, I'm not experienced a whole lot that I think that we should have stopped. Let me say that. But I do, um, have always felt that we are up against it sometimes. And I think that a proactive discussion about what we, where we will clearly draw the line on what's said in these council chambers is an important thing. And I think that we should come to some decision about that. I don't know what, I don't know what that is, uh, but I do, I am in favor of having that discussion, um, from a proactive perspective and protecting, um, you know, the rights of other people. They, they don't come to the council meeting to listen to, um, vile and hateful, uh, speech that may be directed at them. And that's where, um, you know, they, we should, I don't know what the constitution says about it, but I think that city council has some control over the meetings and we should not allow certain kinds of conversation to happen.
So given that, do you have a solution aside from the proposed language? Because the proposed language was meant to be that solution without being too prescriptive?
You want, you want, you want me to do what you asked Carson to do? You want me to write?
If, if you have a better language suggestion, because the language that is-
I'll do it.
In front of you, great. The language that is in front of you is the most broad with a legal definition, um, that we can protect ourselves.
I will provide council leadership my, um, suggested words. I won't be as fast as Councilmember Carson.
Please send to Jason so that he can pass it along to us.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. I think we have talked this one round and round enough for tonight. Uh, thank you all for the engaging conversation and, uh, thought exercises here. And we will move on to council talk time. Does anyone have anything for council talk time? Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks. Just a quick update on the Hopper item. Um, we are in the process essentially with council leadership kind of acting, um, definitely acting as the cosponsors on this legislation. We have met, um, with the mayor and her staff once and then, uh, created a next step to get further, uh, feedback from the staff, um, as a next step. So that's where we are. Thanks.
Thank you for the update. I appreciate you doing that. Anything else for council talk time? Mayor Bernie?
Derby Days is this week, Friday and Saturday. So if you haven't paid attention, please take a look at our website or social media and, um, we hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Anyone else want to jump in with anything? Councilmember Carson?
I was just gonna mention the same thing. I, I see the first truck has pulled up in the city hall parking lot for the rides. So-
Oh, nice.
So probably David, Davis Amusements or whoever it is. So, uh, anyway, exciting. And come, come out and talk to us at the council booth, uh, or also at, I know some of us are going to be flipping flapjacks at, at, uh, the, um, Station 11 in downtown Redmond. So come and support the firefighter benevolent fund and, and have some good flapjacks.
Just got to say flapjacks one more time.
Yeah, right.
All right. Um, I did want to call attention to the email response we got around, um, the salary commission and the council's potential options and responsibilities. I don't know if any, everyone had a chance to, uh, review that or, um, if anyone had any questions around it. So as it stands, um, the, the council's responsibility at the moment, we, we have no responsibility unless we were to repeal the current ordinance, which we could do and have a conversation around council salaries, but they would not be, they would only impact people taking office in the, um, in the coming years and they would be then staggered. So we would have to repeal an ordinance, come to a decision amongst ourselves. Those would only, that decision would only impact the, those taking office in the next term. Uh, so just wanted to highlight that. Councilmember Anderson?
What is the date of that email?
I believe Mr. Haney sent it around June 9th.
Thank you.
Did that not get to everyone?
June 9th is a long time ago at this-
It is a long time ago. Yeah. Councilmember Fields?
So, uh, maybe some clarification here. Um, our actions, if we repeal the ordinance, would you say June 8th?
9th. Wait.
Then we go back to the previous?
No. So we would repeal the ordinance and we would default to the state law, which is that city councils, um, can set their own, but they only are in staggered when the next person takes office. Not the next person, when the newly sworn in electeds take office.
So there's a possibility that, uh, there would be a difference in the way council members are paid?
Correct.
Interesting.
In this upcoming election-
Has-
There would be three council members that do not receive whatever.
Has there been any discussions between the mayor and council leadership on the process? I mean, from a outside perspective, listening to public testimony, uh, reading the, uh, city attorney email and reading the rules, it is not clear to me that, that the process, uh, was done correctly, was not done- was not done potentially even legally. I did find, I made it clear that I found the approach that the mayor took was fairly offensive to the people who were on the commission, and there is a certain amount of disrespect to the council. And in my opinion, there's a certain amount of disrespect to democracy itself. That was a process that city had. It felt like they were acting in accordance with what they were guided to do. And then when we didn't like the answer, we took a very heavy-handed approach and fired each one of them individually. So it's not clear to me that the process that the city took, led by the mayor's office, was even, should have been allowed. And I don't know what role council has in that.
So, from my communications, council has no role in that. And as the ordinance states that each individual council member, or each individual commissioner can be removed, I think the action that council would take is amending an ordinance, the ordinance to say that dismissal of the entity of the body, I think there would need to be an amendment into the ordinance as such, given what we just saw.
So if the council-
If I might, I would suggest that you take it up with Jim Haney, the attorney. I would be concerned that you might be divulging or discussing legal ramifications in public in a public meeting, and so you might want to discuss this with Jim Haney.
I'm only sharing the information that was shared with us?
I, yes, you are, definitely. I'm just concerned about the rest of the conversation.
So are you suggesting that we have a executive session with Mr. Haney on the topic?
I would suggest that first, I think Mr. Haney did send a correspondence to the council that directs you exactly what your responsibility is. And if you had more information than that, then I think you should talk to him as well.
If we, I'm sorry, if we have more information than that?
Possible next steps, that was different information than what was in that letter.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart?
Kind of changing the topic entirely. Ballots for the primary election are going to be mailed by King County Elections tomorrow, as we discussed back when we were working on the mayor's salary. I think that these should always be, and I believe the process that council decided upon for the future should always be back in the budget process of the prior biennium. So at this point, I do not have an appetite for taking on this conversation for the remainder of '23. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President Kritzer, I saw your hand.
I was just going to note that I haven't received a communication on this topic since May 25th, so perhaps the communication you mentioned, Council President Forsyth, was once sent directly to you or to a smaller group of council members, if you wanted to share that on, since it sounded like there was some confusion on that.
I will do so. I had requested that be shared more widely, and it seems like it did not potentially happen. Is that what you were going to say, Ms. Anderson? Okay. On this topic? Okay. I will get with Mr. Haney on that and make sure that everyone has that information. That would probably be why it was not brought up sooner. So I apologize for not catching that. Thank you. Anybody else have anything for council talk time? All right. And with that, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.